Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council reporting and meeting stream for Scottsville Town Council's regular business meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. My name is Matt Wallace. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. The Town Council meeting this evening is held on a Tuesday because of the holiday we observed yesterday. Our meeting is held in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. Our meetings are open to the public here at the Town Hall, 401 Valley Street. We also have opportunities for the public to attend and participate online and by phone. If you're viewing the meeting in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here this evening is seven minutes until 7:00 PM, the posted start time for the meeting. I'll mute this line while we set up our room and get our form together. You can skip ahead on your video by seven minutes and you'll see our meeting come to work. Thank you.
Javier, can you hear me?
Yeah, Jack.
Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Perfect. Alright.
Mr. Adalas is joining us remotely with a with a COVID test for an abundance of caution, but he can help us in pointing. I can call out Mr. Bet.
Here.
Mr. Hans, are you able to join us?
Sorry, was that me?
Yes.
Yes, here. Sorry.
Where are you located at the moment this evening?
Uh, 725 Harrison Street in Scottsville.
You have a medical issue that prevents you from attending in person?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Heisen?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and eternal.
I just want to mention that some of the terminologies, you probably should follow the Scottsville Town Council procedures. The annual meet, it's not an organizational meeting, it's an annual meeting. And we do not have a vice mayor, we have a president of the council, which is the same thing as after the service to as a substitute. So I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have.
What else? Those two items being mentioned, do I have a motion to move the consent count? Just to remember I moved it to the consent count. There are like a second. A room discussion. All favor.
Aye.
I give aye and then change your ayes. Nay and then. I think the ayes be ayes and the nays be nays and I hope the nays be ahs. There are one thing. Alright, let's get into our new reorganizational annual.
Oh, yes, sir. The details within this organizational meeting are laid out between our charter and some of the town codes. Put off because of last month's, but here it's getting of the calendar year. Officers and establish some times for the coming year. Past practice is to, the onstanding schedule is the second Monday work session and the third Monday business meeting at seven o'clock, but that can't be changed. You also nominate and appoint the vice mayor or president of council on this body who presides in the absence of the mayor. This may also be a good time for you to look at the wording of your committee assignments and confirm the council liaisons for those. So those items could be taken up in the future.
I am a under. Number three. Do you have any problems with the current schedule of meetings?
So we're going to call this the annual meeting tonight as opposed to an older, safer meeting. That's what we're missing behind us and then I think is what happened. The annual meeting should have been held last month. We already leave. Oh, my goodness. No, I'm just saying, I'm saying we discussed this at the workshop. We need an annual meeting and this should be the time to have the annual meeting, not an organizational meeting.
Change the agenda to say annual meetings because we're having our annual meeting right now.
Thank you.
Sir. Do you have any problems with certain bird Mondays of the month that have been delayed for the last nine years?
I'd like to make a statement about that.
Yes, sir.
And as you just said, it's been many, many years. This council has had their workshop and they're meeting on Monday. It leads and stopped them here. It's been many, many years since the federal or state governments changed a lot of meetings of the holidays, excuse me, to Mondays. There are only three established holidays that go by day. That's the other four, November 11th, Veterans Day, and Christmas. Thanksgiving is always on Thursday. I think that this calendar year. Thank you. I already have my place. Two add calendar because of the Monday holiday. Case in point, Martin Luther King Day. I've been on council six years. I had to remind council five or six years that there is a Martin Luther King Day, so we have to celebrate it. I just use that as an example and the schedule will change. We would have less changes if we were to meet on Tuesday. We would have no conflict with federal state holidays.
That makes sense, Mr. Payne. Anybody else have any comments on that?
Just before workshops, right? No, no, no. Workshops, no. Right? Town council itself, they're also on Monday.
I think we should stay on Monday.
I would like to make a motion to their.
I would like to make some comments. I would like to. What's in here? Get to Monday and Tuesday. Monday at one. I would mind you that is. In the effort to not reschedule, but.
I'll bring it to cabinet up. I'll bring it to council attention and the August that on our website, we were advertising this meeting for last night and we're just reading the directions. We wouldn't have these errors that our council and staff seem to have.
Payne, would you like to make a formal motion?
I'd like to make the motion that all town workshops and all town council meetings doesn't regularly schedule the moves from Monday to Tuesday.
Okay, Mr. Heisen. Room discussion, uh, room room discussion.
Yeah, that's a bad idea. This doesn't sound, you know, this is an issue where we consider the fact that there are federal holidays and the federal holidays to be changed to separate, but at the same time, we do have a tradition with the town and it's pretty understood that on Monday nights is when we need them. It's true. We could change it. I just think that idea.
Yeah, question. I enjoy this. It doesn't matter to me which night it is as long as it's stopped before seven o'clock. Because I cook on Monday. Thank you. And we eat at six, so.
Now, I realize that some people, you know, have gotten accustomed to the Mondays and there may be members of councils that like to have the Monday meetings. For example, if you happen to be working and you may have a Tuesday off day, I understand that, but you're going to have the same problems. Meeting on Tuesday and then, you know, get up and go in the work on Wednesday. So.
I think too, I think that the one with your position on this that meeting on Tuesday night, you could stay up the whole day on Monday to prepare for Tuesday night.
Yeah.
You know, not doing anything over the weekend and all sudden something gets on Monday and we gotta go around it just before like my team.
Well, soon, you know, our staff was, you know, absent for quite a few days last week and then a holiday followed this Monday. They could probably use that.
Any other comments, discussion? As we move the second in and the stressed, moving of our work sessions and our council meetings to Mondays of each month.
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays. Anything further before we get out of the book? As soon as aliens get out of our.
We'll get there. Yes, sir. The motion to move to Tuesday. Mr. Berset?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzko?
No.
Mr. Hans?
No.
Um, Mr. Heisen? Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries on about a three to two second.
Not this. We may reset.
I believe maybe that it was George.
Yeah, we didn't have, yes.
Thank you.
Should we stick on Mondays?
I wouldn't mind having a six o'clock meeting. No, that's controversial one, but.
Alright, I like to be a little dominating point. Vice President of Mayor, who is currently on the council.
Can I, can I nominate Mayor Hines? Like nominate her for the position of the president of the council, also the vice mayor.
I'll say her. During the other combination was in the future. I'll nominate her for him. I'll second that. So let's we have a second for Miss Hines nomination. Second from the science nomination. During none, is there a second for Mr. Payne's? I see the cycles. Yeah, there is a discussion on Mr. Payne, holding this position as president of the council. During none, our last for the book.
Mr. Berset? Mr. Ritzko?
No.
Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
And his president of the council. And we'll short committees and council areas on board. Is that something we need to do tonight? And we want all that for the work session.
We, we haven't in the past wordsmithed those committee descriptions in work sessions a bit. If it is straightforward to, if anyone's interested in swapping committees, that might be simple. If, if we need more work session on the descriptions of the committees, that might take longer. That's up to you.
I think we're going to need more work. I like to, first of all, we got, we got a vacancy to check the review board. And we also I'd like to start to have a new committee. Somebody else would be better too, but I really like, really, really need a financial oversight committee as well. So I think we need to work on that and ship some of these, ship some of these some of these committees around.
Alright, let's, you know, what do you think about this? We, we hold off on committee charters and council appointments till talk about it at our next work session. Everybody submit to me or Matt what you'd like to do. And then we'll, okay, make some decisions. Okay? I'm just trying to decide who committees tonight.
Okay, well, in the meantime, I guess, I guess Alex might be stepping in a little bit for ARB. Is that?
No, we have to talk about that. That's why we need a work session to really.
I know, but it's all part of the. Some, anybody can go to that. Yeah, just as a fill, the fill the gap thing.
So at the next work session, you tell me what you'd like to do and we'll see what can make happen. Right? Anything else on right number three? I have number four as a public forum and we have a couple of great guests tonight, which we have represented through the Boys and Girls Club and I'll ask y'all to step forward and state your names and go off while you're here.
Mr. Payne, before we get started, I don't believe we had a discussion on the approval of the past minutes or the financial report.
Including the consent count. They're not in there?
We discussed the agenda, but we didn't discuss the.
I call for, I call for you to approve the consent count.
I beg your pardon. Yes, the consent is the bundle of those things. So there's not so take up time as such a motion on. I recorded you about now.
I was just thinking, yeah, we would go live on number four.
But maybe it'll go one by one.
When you're looking at anybody, look at these sort of hour and hour superpowers, they have a consent count. All the stuff that you take up on time, it's already side of the town, there's a consent count. You have a question about Monday's sounds, which we really end up going to be approved of what we can say.
And we did both of them.
We did, that's it. Now, there was your still question.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let me just say we will thank you on Mondays or Tuesdays, whichever it is going forward. My name is Amanda Jones and I am the head of the Regiship Council for the James River Boys and Girls Club right across the street. This is my colleague, James Brown, James Compton of the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia. And as I said, we are here formally to thank you. You supported the club last year with a donation of $5,000. And those monies went to very big causes for our kids. And we just wanted to highlight a few of the things that have happened within this last year. Your investment in that club is growing the partnership between the town and the club, which was one of our primary issues we came to you initially. And you're investing in our young people and it's been a very successful year for our club members this year. We serve around 70 students per day and that gets closer to about 100 in the summer. Last July, our team from the James River Club competed in the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia's organization-wide stem award of the expedition called Medal. And Mayor Ron Smith was a judge for us. We thank him for his generous serving as a judge for our event. In October, the James River Club's Financial Literacy Program won the program of the year award in Washington and Virginia's area. And we are teaching kids about money and how to spend and save. And it was an amazing technological app that people get to use and they get to earn money through an app. They get to spend it how they want and it has been an amazing tool for budgeting and planning. And it's been a great resource. And so we were awarded the program of the year for that particular program. Other things that we've done with community is we have had a movie night with the partnership of the Parks and Recs. We've had a family wellness fair to connect your members and families with our partners and resources. And with the partnership with the Scottsville Library, we've hosted a book fair for the middle class. Going forward for our fiscal year 24 request, we are here tonight formally ask you as a request to continue the more financial support for the James River Boys and Girls Club, James River. Five thousand dollars. And the town support is the endorsement of the club services and helps us to be able to provide out of school resources for community members from Scottsville and the surrounding communities every day after school and all during the summer. And your support has helped us keep our membership fees low. Families pay anywhere from $15 to $35 per child and the actual cost for our $2,000. So your very generous support of $5,000 really covers two club members fully for the entire year, after school and summer. And your support reflects the investment in the club's programs, things like STEM, arts, financial literacy, summer reading, healthy cooking, and other enrichment activities that promote our priority outcomes and academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship building. So we really can't thank you enough for your very, very generous support. And hopefully we can continue to grow this partnership to other, not only the town, but other community members as well. So thank you. And I will turn it over to Judy and James for other thanks and any questions.
I just wanted to double the thanks, but I also hope that all of you will come to the club sometime. You really would come and see what we're doing. I find that a lot of people in Scottsville don't know where we are still. And for that, Ron's trying to help us get a sign that will go on Valen Street, pointing the right mission. But I really want to invite you to come and see. And Jolani, who's the head of the James River Club activity, would love to, you just probably should let us know, but come anytime. And I hope you get signed up soon. So that's all that.
I'm comfortable. I can say there are gratitude as well. I can say gratitude to Ministry of Law and Superior Council. With the red sign, let's have a, well, see. As you said, please encourage her to come to the club to see firsthand the programs that are happening at this time of day. Where is her? 2:30 to 6:30 PM to the high parish. It's up. We go early, six, seven hours a weekend this evening and in the summer.
We were about to say we have a new bus.
I saw that it hadn't gotten posted.
Yes, it's sitting on there in use. In fact, July, he's been substituting as a bus driver, giving.
Number years ago. And we tell you for the bus, because it always is the last stop, so.
So come see us.
A lot more on the bus. I got to go here.
Thank you so much.
We're just getting into the process, like everybody else, and push through the household expenses instead of. For that, and. The bus weekend. Um, I don't know. We have to.
Oh, I I beg your pardon. Sorry. There are a couple of other comments. There are a couple of other public comments.
I was gonna get, uh, superb. I was staffed. That's what we did.
But I actually want to speak with the local resident, not just. Oh, okay. And Mayor Ryan, for one, I know. Um, and then I do, I, I'll just make up for this to. Mayor Smith, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. First, I'd like to speak to you as a local resident, not as a supervisor. And I recognize that, you know, I can't totally separate those responsibilities, but this is my own. I also, um, feel like I have the both the right privilege, the opportunity to speak with you as a local resident. So that's where I would like to start my remarks. Um, I want Scottsville to be successful. And I have made a point not to ever publicly criticize any decisions by this council, because that's within your legislative jurisdictions. And that's your right. And I don't live within the town limits. I do want to remind, I want to mention something that Colin Powell says that for leaders, you bring the weather into the room. And by that, what he means is you set the tone and the tenor for everything that follows. And as a local resident, I will tell you, I have been disappointed in the way you have treated each other in these meetings. And I've also been embarrassed by the way that sometimes you ridicule your very dedicated county staff. Um, and I would just ask that you treat each other more with respect. Because if you don't, what you're doing is you're setting the tone for your community members. And everything that you do when it comes to land use and things like that becomes very emotional for people because it's their homes, it's their businesses, it's where they live. Um, and it's so it's easy to start sniping at each other, but I would simply ask that you not do that. And that instead you try to keep, treat each other with the dignity and respect that you each deserve and set the tone for your community so that they don't fall into the same trap. And it is a challenge. Secondly, I would like to speak with you from the perspective of the supervisor who represents this district. And Mayor Smith, Mr. Lawless, and I have worked and continued the work that I started with former Mayor Gill in bringing the relationship between the town of Scottsville and the county to, I think, a level that it has not been seen, at least in many, many years. We've had annual meetings with each other. Um, county staff, I believe, has been much more available and receptive, providing assistance to your staff. Because we have a larger staff, more resources. Um, and through those, those actions, I think that we have been successful in elevating our relationship and in our support. But candidly, as the supervisor who represents this district, I don't know what you want. Because I hear from some of you that you would like to see more of kind of a development area within the town of Scottsville as it applies in our comprehensive plan. And I can assure you, the board of supervisors in the county has no interest in making the development area outside of the town limits of Scottsville. But then, on the other hand, when applications for housing come before you, it's a great challenge to have anything approved, and many of those are disapproved. So one of the arguments that I've heard is, well, we don't want too much growth. Scottsville's losing population. While the county over the last decade or so has seen an average increase in population of two percent per year, Scottsville in that in the last twenty years has lost eight point four percent of its population and is experiencing an average one percent decline per year. If you were applying today to this Commonwealth, you would not qualify as a town. Because you have to have a minimum of a thousand people to qualify as a town. You're only half of that, just over five hundred people. You, as a separate legal entity, have the jurisdiction, the authority to make some decisions that can improve the financial standing of your town. And you cannot ask the town, the county on its own to carry all of that, yet still be a town. I asked the mayor and county administrator today to forward to you five documents that have been accumulated over the last few years with regard to support that the county has provided to Southern Alamo County Scottsville District and the county of Scottsville to the tune of millions of dollars. And every quarter and every year, we on the board get reports from the county that delineates how much support is given to each magisterial district. In each time, the Scottsville Magisterial District has received more than its proportionate share based on population in relation to the other magisterial districts. So these comments may not be directed at quite as much to you on the town council as to, as to the community. But as the supervisor who represents this district and who sees this support being provided, it gets old here in the Southfield saying, well, the county doesn't care about the southern part of Alamo County because the facts are there and the data is there and the county does support the, uh, the southern part of the district. And then finally, as the chair of the board, I would like to just say that it's important that Scottsville have a sufficient population to support the things you need. Our two smallest schools are Red Hill and Scottsville, which service the southern part of the county. When the population was insufficient, we lost Yancy School. And if we don't have enough people down here in the southern part of the county, there may be a risk at some point in the not-too-distant future that Scottsville all of entry could be a risk because the population center is further up. So I'm not criticizing any decision that you have made. I want to be very clear on that, but there are consequences of those decisions. And if you don't have a sufficient population and a tax base, then it's very difficult to afford to continue providing the services that you both expect them to serve as a town here in the southern part of the county. In twenty twenty-four, Charlottesville added two buildings, which increased by two hundred and twenty million dollars their property values and increased their tax revenues by two million dollars per year. Two properties. Now, I'm not in any way suggesting that anything out that development would be in Scottsville. But if you approve sufficient and reasonable development to increase your tax base, then you will have more revenues to be able to provide the services that you need. Additionally, you have the authority as a town to set your own tax rates in some areas. And from the standpoint of the chair of the board supervisors, I would encourage you to strongly consider some of those things. Because you have, you want to be a town, you are a town, but there are also some responsibilities that go along with that, and I would just ask that you consider that. And I thank you for giving me the latitude to try and address from three different perspectives. Um, my job as the supervisor who represents this district is to carry your message to the county. But sometimes it's hard when the, when the rest of the board looks down at Scottsville and says, then why are you not taking or why are you denying the actions that could help your own financial standing? So thank you, Mayor, and the council.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public audience wishes to be?
Mr. Mayor, you have Mr. Jack Maxwell on one.
Mr. Maxwell, welcome.
How you guys doing today? Um, first off, we're working on getting some July fourth plans up and running. Um, we're working on a new dashboard that's basically like VDOT's five oh one system, but it'd be basically just for town Scottsville, which will have your parking situation map. Um, and everything that, um, Chief Jenkins wants on the system. And we want to make sure that the parking is easier to accessible. And we're up to two hundred and ninety parking lot spaces in the town of Scottsville, which I recalculated, um, last night, ended up with two hundred and ninety available parking spots and around the downtown Scottsville area, including we, we were paying the, um, no parking, um, areas along downtown Scottsville Valley Street. We're still trying to work on that. Um, that final draft for the parking match should be finished by mid to late April. And hopefully everything be finished pre-late June. With anything being finalized for the, um, testing of the, um, dashboard by July fourth. We're working closely with the government, um, board and the town public safety and local public safety officials on the mapping thing. Um, so we're working on making sure that, figure out who, what parking is available, what stuff like that. So if anybody has questions, let me know.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Maxwell?
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack, for all your hard work. Anybody else? Okay. As I started saying earlier, um, I'm not gonna go through the list of meetings I had. I picked them up last Monday evening. But I was happy today to see that there's heavy equipment sitting on the site where the tire fuels markets. I think the old house is ready to come down. Uh, the Tachy's got in and Sally called the doors and windows and brings it for a little saving. And shit to tell what we're doing now, so hopefully we will see some ground open here in the immediate future. Mr. Vice Mayor slash President up until a few moments ago, you very big man.
Well, I want to say one thing. Uh, I just want to thank our town administrator for, Matt, when you made this document, I really thought it was very cool. And I know, uh, just thinking about just the things that you have done as a town administrator, as you've done an incredible job as a town administrator. And I know this meant a lot to you, this particular project, but one of the things, I don't know if our other four town councils, you voted for the industrial park, if they, as they've been communicating with the company, um, if they've asked if they want something like this with the industrial park, you know, that might be something that you guys have thought about in terms of if you're talking to them as they move forward. So in other words, what Matt shared here was some usage is to try to take the building and have some cool architectural designs. And it's not out of the question they couldn't do something like that as it comes to industrial park. So that's, you know, kind of a cool thing. Now, I also want to say it's been an honor to be the vice mayor, and I'm also very thankful to pass that along. And it's been a neat opportunity. I'm looking for a much more effective way to serve the town as just a town council. So I'm excited about that.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Reports, Charter Committee.
If I could add some Mr. Grisco's comment?
Sure. Thank you.
Um, Dan, the, the, the four votes were not for an industrial park. They were against the proposed project. Okay? They were not for an industrial park. I did not vote for an industrial park, and my vote was to oppose it.
It's.
So did you misword yourself?
No, I didn't misword myself. That's.
But that's what you said, though. You said that that we have four votes. Now, please, Mr. Mayor, we have four votes for an industrial park.
That's correct.
A minute and a half ago, you said that.
That's what I said. That's what I meant.
So, but it's not correct.
That is correct.
It is not. I did not vote for an industrial park. And I, I can address, uh, supervisor price. This is why we have discussions, because sometimes we don't agree.
Thanks.
That's it for that.
Good.
The vote was taken on the apartments. The vote was for no apartments. But the vote for no apartments meant that the, meant that the industrial complex should take place.
Could take place, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
It didn't. It was not a vote for it to take place, and we have no idea if it will take place. And I mean, I mean, if I can, back a year ago, we had the proposal for the housing. Forty-eight houses, planning commission said, well, let's put thirty-six. There was a three votes in favor of that proposal, three against, you yourself broke the tie. And it was passed. To my recollection, we have not heard or discussed anything about that housing proposal since that meeting. I personally have it. I can't speak for the other councils. But there was a vote taken, and that was it. However, with this proposal, we're talking about it now. That vote was taken. It was denied. And to use the same words you used to me, Mr. Mayor, sometimes things don't go the way you want to. So let's drop it.
Good discussion. All right, let's have a report, uh, from the planning commission.
Uh, I'm gonna defer to our town administrator.
Mr. Wallace? The planning commission met at the beginning of this month, the sixth, and had, um, some preliminary conversation about town comprehensive plan update. This is the long-range land use plan that thinks about twenty years ahead into the town's future and sets goals for land use and development, public facilities and services, the environment, um, housing and other topics. Planning Commission is very interested in a, um, planning process which is closely linked with town council's own goals. Um, they, they want to be in sync and supportive as they do that long-range work, that it be a plan that council can, uh, promptly implement. Uh, they know that their planning goals connect closely to your budget goals. So they're interested in sharing, uh, strategic planning conversations they can have. Uh, planning commission is, um, keen to recruit volunteers for a high level of public engagement that that plan represent the true needs of our diverse community. So look for that, um, call for volunteers from soon for help with, um, community outreach and events, data analysis, and the straightforward document design of an attractive looking plan. In current planning topics, uh, planning commission has been working on a zoning text amendment for home stays. Um, that's at the request of the town council to distinguish the, the tourist rental of a single room in, um, an occupied home from the conversion of that entire home. Council had some interest in a simpler process for that house sharing, um, where, uh, converting a house out of residency into tourism would receive a, a, maybe a higher standard of review. Um, planning commission doesn't have that text ready yet and is continuing to work on it. Uh, they did receive a, um, a beginning update from, from staff about a subdivision review for a project called East Village, which is a hundred and fifty acres, the track grounded by the Dan Cleveland area, Blenheim Road and Alabama Springs. There's no written submission for that yet, but it's certainly a project that will be, uh, of a high level of community interest and concern. So planning commission talked about their process to subdivision review. This is by right residential development, um, in the neighborhood of fifty single-family homes on about a hundred and fifty acres together total. Planning Commission will work hard to assure that our subdivision technical standards are followed. The placement of roads, utilities, stormwater management features and that sort of thing. But to, to the discussion earlier, um, on the days, uh, there is no town council vote in this kind of by right process for the number of the homes.
Good. Any questions for us from all?
So, uh, just to go back, there's, uh, uh, yes, sir. Mr. Price said, uh, we have fifty houses and thirty-six houses. We have eighty-six houses. That would be a huge, a huge, um, population increase. So that's potentially, uh, something to look at in the future, that the, uh, how are we gonna manage that population increase? Eighty-six, eighty-six more homes in our area, which is pretty much doubling our, our number of homes we have now. Or at least of.
Could be more than that because remember we approved thirty, what, thirty-five homes over there about ten years ago.
Yeah, so if there's a hundred homes already, that, that could be by right. And, uh, you know, it is by right. Yeah, right. So, so that's good.
All right, um, Mr. Rissap, since you went to the ARB meeting, do you want to comment on that?
Aaron, would you like to? Um, I just got to see kind of how Jack had run things. It was great. He's a very diligent, uh, chairperson to that committee and kind of fun to see how everything works, still getting familiar with.
Even though your talent lies on a better plan, even though ARB, uh, was certainly a semi-utile, that's the A's long position. It doesn't mean you have to be, where's the, where are we, if you need to be, are, um?
I would be, uh, having something I'm interested in, but, uh.
We would love to have ours.
But, uh, we discussed a couple of things while I was there. One was a rant in the back of the church, I think, I think took kind of the, uh, top spot of the meeting and basically know what they're doing and know what direction the argument is and I was just quietly observing. I was just quietly observing, but uh it looked like they had it under control.
That's all right. Anything on events right now?
I am assembling my group of volunteers, so nothing much.
Super, thank you. Mr. Price, you got anything that uh?
Always, always. We have been real busy. We've had a couple of meetings uh last month and this month. Um, so let me go over those pretty quickly. Our main uh what we've been doing mainly has been the website maintenance budget, but also some old business. Uh, as Jack Maxwell mentioned, he we we all, the the government service committee uh walk the town with the chief. To look at the parking situation and um uh reviewing where's where you can park and where you cannot park. And and Jack's uh taking initiative and making a map uh for the Fourth of July. But he's also asked them to do one for the town, for the merchants and the tourists. So we'll have something that we could either post or hand out, or we could give, or you could get down online and could see where the two hundred and ninety parking spaces are. There's a lot of parking in town, but sometimes you got to walk. All right, the website, um Eileen Morse is spearheading this and uh uh we have proposals. Uh, four or five proposals already, uh they met last week and looked at them and they're gonna look at it, we're gonna look at them Friday. And we'll review them and make a recommendation to council on and uh redoing the website, which to many people is very exciting. Because the website is really needing some revamping and and uh. Uh, if more information and and better communication for the whole town and with each other. So the website is is a big one. Uh, maintenance, uh the town administrator maintenance band have been meeting and reviewing the activities each week. Uh, because we're getting close to uh cutting season and that was problematic last year. So they're they're meeting and we're also looking at possibly outsourcing some maintenance activities to contractors next year that we could afford it. So maintenance, um and then the big, the big issue we've we've been dealing with for several months is the budget. Uh, we looked at the initial draft budget. It's estimated the budget has a deficit of a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And the committee made some suggestions to consider that would result in a balanced budget. Um, so we're gonna have to make some hard decisions and uh some maybe not so popular ones. But anyway, we're also gonna be looking at HR policies and financial policies because there's been some spending that was not wise, I guess. But anyway, we're looking at revenue. We may consider increasing the meals tax to make it more in line with Almaron, that would bring in some revenue. We're definitely looking at limit limiting salaries of such the increases for town staff. Uh, and then we're gonna look at costs and oversight on spending. And the costs include administration, capital improvements, possibly canceling the sidewalk project, which I think we're gonna talk about. Uh, limit donations to organizations, terminate the DMV this summer. Uh, and other things to try to get the balanced budget. Uh, and finally, it was suggested at our meeting to look at the properties that the town owns to see if it could be worth selling those assets. So, you know, getting a balanced budget uh and under control will be a challenge. It could be, I think, we will be done, but there's gonna be some um some big decisions to do that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, you got anything to add for us, public safety or anything like that?
I'm still meeting with Chief Jenkins at least once a week and and got nothing but good things to say about. His department and I get a lot of feedback from the community for the same reason.
All right, thank you so much.
By the way, um, it's made up in the town, but are we settled on the police vehicle? Is there any type of vote that needs to be taken as far as as purchasing and getting this vehicle?
Mr. Wallace? I do believe where we landed at the work session was that the council had previously voted to approve the grant project that set out the terms. And we're proceeding to implement the grant, so I feel comfortable that we can execute that.
Okay, and as far as the final expenditure, we haven't voted as a council on that yet.
Yes, it what, oh, big point, it's it's an anticipated project within the current budget. So we expected to get the USDA grant revenue and expected to use it for this process uh purchases. So it it looks like budgeting normal to me, sir.
Okay, so in your opinion, council has approved the purchase and.
I would say that we didn't, but uh. I think in work session we kind of, I guess we didn't have an official vote on it, but I think it's a necessary thing.
Well, I do too, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we were we're okay. And everybody had come to it, you know, in the same agreement, work sessions aren't votes, you know.
That's right, that's right.
Uh, Mr. Hines, you got anything to add?
Um, just a couple of things. I did meet with Matt earlier this week. Um, and he is going to look into um. Replacement posters for Canal Basin Square. Uh, we have a lot of water damage on the information boards that that are currently up there. So so we're looking at um replacing those. Um, the spring cleanup has been set for uh Thursday this year. So Javi um put together a sign-up sheet for me that we could post on social media. For folks who'd like to participate in the cleanup and uh our next project is gonna be the um. Cleaning and taking care of the benches in all of our parks.
Thank you. I am seven A, Mr. Wallace, regional hazard mitigation plan update.
Yes, sir. We have a um a guest this evening, Mr. Ian Baxter from the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. Um, a skilled planner who will tell us about this process and put quite a deal of work into it, and I've been happy to assist assistance here.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace, Mayor Smith, members of council. Um, I'm just here today to ask uh or or offer you the opportunity rather to uh adopt the regional natural hazard mitigation plan. Um, twenty twenty-three update with the event. Um, working on uh for a long time, about a year and a half, um it was recently approved by FEMA in January of twenty twenty-three. Um, just wanted to tell you a bit about it, I know, I'm not sure if you remember, but I was here in uh July or June. To kind of describe the process that we engaged in um in the planned update, but trying to give you a high-level overview, answering your questions. And then uh, you know, feel free to adopt a plan. Um, but essentially, the purpose of the natural hazard mitigation plan is to prepare for natural disasters. Uh, reduce loss of light, property damage, disruption of commerce. Um, we do work uh primarily in our planning update process on getting accurate and timely data. That reflects the risk, relative risk of these hazards to those to the region. Um, and so uh by virtue of being a regional plan, you're going around to all the governing boards, um asking them to adopt it. I'll talk a little bit about what that sort of unlocks in in terms of what the um federal government sort of views. But uh we've, as of right now, been to Nelson and then both of them have adopted a plan in the past about three weeks. Um, so essentially assessing the risk for natural hazards. Incentive essentially is that uh FEMA requires an adopted hazard mitigation plan as an as a condition for eligibility. On a certain amount of uh natural hazard mitigation grants. Um, I'll talk about those a little bit. I'm not an expert on those, but I do know enough to hopefully answer some of your questions. Um, and in addition to FEMA, we work with um Virginia Department of Emergency Management Board of P D. And so the two main grants that this uh, you know, and will obviously be going to Alamo County as well to ask them to adopt this plan. But essentially, the the two major grants that you're looking at that this kind of um allows you to be eligible for are the actual hazard mitigation. Grant program, H M G P, and then the brick grant, which is the building resilience in communities. Uh, or building resilient infrastructure in communities. And both of these are uh grant programs that allow for really flexible and varied amount of uh activities. Whether that be retrofitting uh housing, whether that be implementing nature-based solutions to be flooding, for example. Um, whether that be uh that uh paying for some of the engineering and planning that would be uh necessary to actually go ahead and do one of these. These projects, so um to us, we really feel like it's a necessary component of our region's disaster mitigation prevention efforts. Which is why it is conducted in a regional manner. But in addition to those sort of grant eligibility um components to it, you know, the plan itself is is sort of a point in time. So it's what what we basically were able to collect up to adoption, up to early twenty twenty-three information about the the community itself. Um, the uh higher section, which is a basically a hazard identification um. And and sort of ranking matrix that we work um with the working group on producing. Uh, and then both a vulnerability assessment and capabilities assessment, which basically analyzes and sort of puts out a a assessment on how vulnerable an area is. Using some uh FEMA software, so there's a few uh a few maps in the plan you'll notice that are Scottsville specific. So flooding information, um economic, potential economic damage, uh depending on a specific flooding scenario. And then finally gives each locality the opportunity to produce um different mitigation action items. So we worked with town staff to develop um some aspirational activities, um whether those be uh regional in nature. I know one of the ones that Matt suggested was increasing transportation, that's obviously not something that uh in evacuation laws. And so obviously something the town could do by itself. Um, but you know, there are other uh opportunities, basically, it's basically an opportunity for localities to kind of do a little bit of planning ahead of it. Um, and and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that this is a very, very high-level overview on a very long two-hundred-page-plus document. Um, and I'd be happy to answer your questions about the process, uh what we've been doing, um collecting the data. Um, but then, yeah, the the opportunity is is there for you all now to adopt it after it's been approved by both P D and FEMA, so.
This just deals with natural disasters, no more nor nor the more for several railroads.
No, yes, that's correct. So the only the only difference between this plan and last one in terms of what the scope was, was a pandemic and communicable diseases. Section was added, which um makes sense.
So you uh you you're connected with FEMA a lot?
Uh, they're the sort of governing body for this for this grant program now. So I would say we didn't, we didn't really work much with FEMA, we just have to send it for them to approve the document after, yeah.
Cause I, cause I'm curious, cause uh, well, I'm not sure even deals with you, but you know, with with this uh the the plant. The factory you had here, they're, one of the things they were going to do is uh change the the flooding boundary. And uh that was never presented, and I'd like to see how that works and and if they could, they could present that to us, how that'll work. If if in in event that they, there was another uh proposal for that.
Sure, yeah, um, I know they have, I'd be happy to see who the right person to talk to about that is. Cause they have, basically, FEMA divides the whole country in different regions, um but I gotta look more into that, I'm not familiar.
Okay.
Off the top, I have a person, yeah.
We have a levee, excuse me, I lose my voice every day. Um, we have a levee that has three pumps that um assists us when we have high water. Either James River or the Creek. Um, and you're talking about natural disasters. Um, so I guess these pumps are a form of mitigation against hazards. Is there any financial assistance in the maintenance and repair of these pumps, which is probably, you know. One of the main things we've got going on around here, if they fail, then you know, we're wet.
Sure, no, yeah, totally understand. Um, I'm not sure of sort of you pass this and then there's some sort of guaranteed income. Or sort of guaranteed stream of funding, but I do know that these these grants are sort of, that's what. Not the purpose necessarily to um fix it once it's broken, but I'm sure that there's a way to access federal money and state dollars for that. These are more, you identify a need for these pumps are sort of near the end of their life cycle. This is a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match, so you you know, and that could be included, you know, county money potentially could be rolled into that as sort of this. Uh, the local component of that, so um, so yeah, this isn't necessarily, you know, I think primarily in uh. Primarily for sort of the um random, you know, once-in-a-lifetime-type disasters. It's my understanding that a lot of localities sort of automatically qualify for that when there's a disaster um declaration made by the state. And um sort of approved by the federal government, but these, sort of the purpose of this plan is to kind of think about these before they happen. Um, and use this plan as evidence within, you know, an application for federal funding. So it's kind of, we we really encourage localities to adopt this plan because it just opens up funding opportunities.
So it could, you know, financially affect us and 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 be beneficial to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is something we, I guess we'll put on the agenda for the work session in March.
There's a, there's a um resolution before you now, if you're comfortable adopting it, if you feel like you need some work session time to just cut it, I'm concerned we do that as well.
Everybody looking at your. Resolution, um, see if you have any questions about that, and if you want to vote on it tonight, you can do that. And if you wanna hold it over to the work session, we'll talk about it, we'll vote on it next time.
Was there any any downside to doing this? Do communities ever say like, wait, we don't want this? I mean, why why would anybody not?
That's a good question.
Has it, has it ever been?
Not in my experience, all, I know that the, so the plan expires, the twenty eighteen update expires in the coming months. And all of the localities, including the incorporated towns of Applewood, so yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Just editorializing, I don't really see it.
It's a formality that we have.
I think the the real work was done in the process of ensuring that we were working the town standard, some mitigation action. And reflecting those priorities, priorities like flooding, prevention, mitigation now.
I can't adopt this one as proposed because it says um town staff is representing the county. Um, I believe that's incorrect.
Oh, yeah, that should be.
So I can't adopt this uh as written. I think the town staff represented the town.
That's correct.
That's not what it said.
Is that a, a typographical correction that we can make, sir?
Can we change that wording now or do we need to have a new document?
I can do, I can do, just take your work session.
Sure, I'm still very, I guess.
Get a final cleaned-up version of the session.
Yeah.
We, I think, I think a point, we do have a technology.
Is there any any deadline timeline?
Um, well, I mean, in the next few months would be preferable.
Well, yeah, we can do it.
Yeah.
We're gonna clean up the way a lot of the questions were at this town. All the two, you know.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. All right, you stand. We're open the public hearing, let's have the town administrator, or this real quick, that's what it's all about again.
Uh, certainly, the um property in question is locally known as Stan Land. It has a hardware street um address on the other side of Hardware Street from the cemetery. The parcel is um about thirteen acres in size and was donated to the um Scottsville Center for the Arts and Natural Environment. Um, about fifteen years ago. Uh, at that time, the uh community engaged a discussion about the arts and nature education uh destiny of that site. Consistent with the request when it was donated, um and we created a um. Uh, a zoning use definition in our village residential code for arts and nature education. Um, the town at that time, two thousand and seven, did not follow through with issuing the special use permit for that property. Um, since then, uh the Stan team, as they presented at work session last week, um have done a good deal of organizing and prep work. Um, and they've identified that this would be a good time to issue the special use permit. Um, they uh uh made the application and presentation, planning commission recommended approval after their public hearing a few months ago. Uh, it does appear consistent with the comprehensive plan and uh and Stan has been a commendable neighbor in arts and nature education.
So you've heard the introduction, I will open the public hearing, if anyone else should speak, step forward and take the.
Good one. Hi, I'm please scan, it's a good. Organization. Uh, question, I'd like to know what precipitated the need for a zoning change when there's no. Design for any building or anything other than sit in the grass and have meetings or presentations. And and as you talked before, Jack, when when there were other considerations for changing the zoning, when you don't have a plan. You make, or Jennifer, we say commercial, it wasn't a commercial need at present. Why would you make a change when you don't know what's gonna be built? I mean, I think probably when you have the design, it'd be great, be done, but.
Not a special use permit and not a zoning change.
I understand, but it just gets closer and closer to what what are you, what are you actually including? That's the whole thing.
Aaron, would you like to progress the audience as to what we're kind of doing?
Did you see the presentation last week?
Uh, saw the presentation.
Okay, so that explains the phase.
Big, big, but it's a benefit of my.
So that explains the um, who would you like me to speak to? So that explained the, um, who would you like me to speak to?
But tell me what you'd like.
Okay, uh, that explained the phasing, uh, that has been proposed for the next five to ten years based on the community feedback as a, uh, public park space. Um, that, uh, would allow for arts and environmental, mental education program. So, um, it does not have a commercial objective as you're, um, suggesting. It has a, uh, community objective as a place, uh, as an outdoor space for the community to gather and learn about arts and education.
And did, didn't you mention last week that with the special use permit, would you be able to get the insurance coverage you need?
Well, that's something that Matt stated, um, that is. I don't, I don't know that to be true. I don't think that to be true, um.
Right now, not anybody is really allowed to go walking around on the property.
Right, correct, yeah.
Especially used for, that, that would be.
Yes. This is the first step in making it a public park so that we could have signs, um, that state that, that be more reliable. Yeah, and for the insurance to cover based on those signs. Now, this is a five to ten year process as was, um, discussed in the presentation from last week and to the planning commission. And that process is based on, um, a series of grants. So we received the C A C F grant that helped us, uh, accomplish pre-design, receiving over three hundred, uh, responses from the community about what they were interested in seeing. That then allowed us to receive a V O F grant, um, to accomplish, um, several, several items. And then once, once that is accomplished and once this is the S U P moves through, then we can write another grant which will help us create a plan.
Can I just say? Only real reason in question of any of this is, is, is a, our community cemetery is straight across the street. And I would like to limit the commercialization with the signage and all this kind of stuff or what. Events might be going on, it's kind of, it's a nice quiet area. We, we have it set up. I don't know that we need to make it so commercialized that I can say, still, when you say opening it up for everybody walking around and doing things, it just seems like it's good as it is. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm just presenting a different idea.
Okay.
Now, to present, this is zone village residential.
Yeah.
Can scan do what they want to with this pipe of zoning without special use permit?
Not according to the town administrators.
Okay, so I'll turn over this way. So, so we have to have a special designation. That was, was looked at years ago, but not after.
I, I believe so, sir.
I mean, that's what you said. You said they, they brought it up to have a special designation and went no farther. So why aren't we doing that tonight? I mean, why can't we talk about that tonight? What would be the zoning designation? Um, park area slash recreational area?
At, at present, you have village residential with no special permits.
Right.
And, um, many, many homes in town have that designation. There's a, a limit to the number and type of events. I mean, you, you can throw a party on a village residential lot. You could have a, a, a band and practice. You could, um, have a party and have a band. Oh, yeah. I think there, there comes a point where a responsible zoning administrator would have to say, there are too many events happening on this property. Neighbors may be beginning to complain about the number of parties happening on this residential property. And what you're doing there isn't within the realm of normal household entertaining anymore. And, and what you have ought, ought to carry that special permit for arts and nature education. So as, as Stan described their, their plans for the future, this zoning may more accurately reflect what they hope to do.
And, and what is that zoning?
The, the base zoning does not change. It stays village residential.
Okay.
But you issued a special use permit in a way that when, um, when Tiger Food Market wanted to build, the restaurant was by right commercial, but they needed a special use permit for the drive thru because it had some other impacts beyond what a restaurant just would.
So this, um, special use permit would actually limit what they could do, um, when they were village residential, i.e. the parties, the music, whatever, whatever you were saying. This special use permit doesn't nullify their right to do that?
All of the same property rights for everything else in village residential still exist. They, they can still do all of the things described in village residential by right, plus what's allowed in the permit.
Okay, I, um, I've, I've got a good idea of the vision of the donor of the land. I've got a good idea of what Scan's trying to do, um, and it's hard to sit here until the future. You know, um, it could, it could start out as a kumbaya party, next thing you know, um, it, it, it's, um, a great nature area for a lot of people to enjoy. Who knows where it's going? On the other hand, um, it scan goes on as a nonprofit. That special use permit stays with that property.
True.
So. Something to think about.
Indeed.
So what if they, they can never develop, they can never put like fifty houses there? Is that right? Because it's, because it's a, becomes a park?
That, that would require a change to that base zoning. Right, to the residential example, right now on, on thirteen acres, the village residential, there's
Fifty-two.
building, building rights for, um, nine homes, but by right. So that, that's something that they could do on this property at any time, uh, for, for something more intensive than the nine houses. It would need a zoning change, especially if it's permanent or recent.
And their, their goal is to not rely on utilities like water and electric, uh, to, to remain as natural as possible and to keep up the natural, um, environment, habitat, et cetera. I think that's what they do.
Also they described, yes, sir.
And Matt, can I ask a question?
Please, thank you, ma'am.
By allowing, um, by voting for the special use permit, by, by changing the zoning, that would limit their ability to build on there, correct?
No, the, 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 all of the, all the regular property rights for village residential, those stay. So, so right now there's, um, there's, like I said, nine hypothetical housing rights. Those still exist. The comparison given in zoning and permits is that property rights are like a bundle of sticks that you hold. The non-property rights is one of those sticks. If you issued a special use permit, you're giving them a new property rights that they didn't have. Doesn't take anything away.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The, um, the only public comment that we received outside of this meeting was from the, um, immediate neighbor to the south, um, Mr. Bryant, who, um, who called in and shared no concerns.
All right, council, you ready to vote on this? If someone needed to hear a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that would be approved of this.
Move it seconded in the board of discussion. Mr. Wallace, you call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Berset?
Yeah.
Mr. Gritsco?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. What was the advocate here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Um, number seven, say, uh, Ms. Radley's, uh, uh, proposed action, uh, she has learned about this, she would like to, uh, table that for about a month at least and do some more, uh, research and get her, uh, presentation together before she comes before the council.
Would you, um, I, I don't, Ms. Merle, can I say, are you interested? Would you like to go ahead and hold the public hearing? Uh, there's of course no need to act after the public hearing today. We, we could be at the House of Public Hearing for another day, but we could hold it in just not so.
Notified, but you're welcome.
Okay. I was notified that she wanted her own home, so I thought that she might want to be here, but we had to come here, so. But if not, so we'll have a public hearing on this Radley, uh, to explain what's been going on there.
Certainly, uh, the, um, of course, she'll, she'll be able to give us more, more detail when she attends. The, um, the property in question is, is this one, one thirty eight, two dash one twenty, which is the side yard on, on this house. Um.
You can ask her, you can ask her, she won't confirm you right while you're trying to, did you start that around here?
Oh, yes, now, I get one. Um, the, the property that we're looking at is, is this one here on Valley Street, um, one thirty eight, two dash one twenty, um, be- between the downtown commercial building, which Ms. Radley owns, and the Spinson house on the other side. It, it backs to a number of residential properties on Harrison Street. Uh, the history on this property is a, a bit convoluted and I, I don't want to speak inaccurately. Um, but su- suffice it to say that the, the zoning map that we have in place now shows both of those parcels as commercial. Uh, and, um, I believe that map is in error. So in, in talking with Ms. Radley about her, um, potential uses of the property, we got to talking into the zoning line. And she thought that this was still some residential. And it looked to me on the zoning map like it was some commercial. So we had a misunderstanding and an error there. I believe she is correct and our zoning map was in error. Years ago, one of the properties was rezoned to commercial and the other remained, um, R three or downtown residential. Um, so I initiated this as a, as a cleanup on the map because what the map showed and what I had been interpreting was that both of the lots were commercial. That was how I always understood it. Ms. Radley did have some, um, development sketches in mind for how the property might be re-divided or subdivided, um, for potential infill in the future, um, but there are no concrete plans on that and I've, I've let her speak to her intentions on the site. Um, rezoning to commercial does allow for smaller lots within this area because the residential hasn't been on lot size and commercial does not. Um, so, uh, does that suffice to introduce it and, and let the property owners speak, even for themselves when we can?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, is everybody sort of getting adjusted with that?
I have no questions about it.
Sure. Right on, uh, public hearing is open and by Russian streets, step forward.
Hi, I'm Maria Merrell. I'm eight one Harrison Street, so we're that long area, we're, and I mostly just had questions. I did want to know, um, this came up at a planning, I think. Um, just that when we received these kind of notices with the letter, I know that the notice, the official notice, you're limited by what you're paying the daily progress, um, but the letter adjoining, it would be really helpful for clarity and transparency, which are super important in a town government, especially in a very small town. Um, just to be really clear and precise about what it's about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that will reduce the time that people come and ask questions in public meetings. So, you know, I don't think you can over communicate anymore and communication is super important just to, to lay fears and just to be clear on what's happening. And, um, the letter just made me think, okay, what specifically was the error? How does this rezoning bring this property into alignment with the comprehensive plan? And I'm just being specific, okay? This is what this means and this is what this, you know, these are the consequences. Um, and then, so if I understand correctly, we're talking about the property that's on the north side there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, you know, I look at this, the ordinances and it just got me to wondering, you guys, I think I've already spoken before. Um, it's really unique the way that Harrison Street backed, uh, to commercial properties. And I believe our comprehensive plan talks about how important our historic district is in our comprehensive plan. Those of us on Harrison Street, uh, absorb a lot of the group of being back to back with commercial properties. Um, and are historic houses, so we also get to absorb the group of being in an A R B. So we get the best of both worlds there. We get the, the noise and the smells and the influence of commercial and then we also get the expense of an A R B. And it's great to be in a historic district, but just, I met up, but I had some questions about, um, the zoning, so I, I read for commercial that you can have no parking closer than twenty feet to residential area. Um, there must be a landscape buffer zone of twenty feet and no structure closer than fifty feet. So it just questions about how that would work on that property size. And then a question about, um, just parking in general and how that works for commercial properties. As I said to Matt earlier, I don't know if the little B and D that's there in that alley is a commercial property or not, um, parking or. Um, and I'm just wondering how it would be impacted of, you know, how you put, if you require parking, how that would work, where something would go, um, it's just all very vague right now. And it definitely impacts all of us with our potential property that back up to it. So just want to make sure that everything's really clear and everyone understands the, the different consequences of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
This is exactly what I was talking about a long ago. This is, again, you, you say you're going to clean up, but why is it necessary to clean up anything until there's a plan? Because you could zone it commercial and then by right, a lot of things could be built on Valley Street that we don't want. And then, number two, the, what has been fenced off in that very front lot of valley, I don't think represents a legal lot and has a sewer easement within it, maybe you could get an eliminate stain on it. That's about it. On the backside, critical slope will seriously prohibit development. And thirdly, already have made that commercial and it's the only alley in town that has no parking on either side. It's a thirty-three foot easement, many other streets in town, alleys, whatever you want to call them, allow parking on one side. This one doesn't. And it's primarily because a garage has been allowed to be there and she has to swing out and occupy the whole street to do that. I mean, Alamo County has been called down and, um, to eliminate somebody blocking the street, she didn't even move after the call, just, just called and let, let it be. I don't think this is a credible request indoor proper use of zoning it now. Period. And before, when was the notice sent to my daughter?
Uh, prior to closing.
Was it, was it sent and, and then received back? Don't waste time. You knew she was buying the property, but I don't think she's gotten it. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else wish to speak? I was telling the hearing.
One of the things is, I've talked to her too, but I, I don't know if she really understands the dilemmas or the restrictions. And I think, uh, she needs to be informed of, you know, setbacks and, and critical slopes and things like that. I don't think she understands that all the way, uh, and so I think she needs to have some communication. I think she's been communicating with a lot of us, but hasn't really got any official communication and, um, I think that the chief mentioned maybe having a memorandum to her that we could review and he could, he could look at to and, and, and that we approve. So we're all given the same message because it's such, such a complicated issue, but I think, uh, you know, listing all the, all the, all the restrictions and then also, uh, well, well, what she can and can't do. And, uh, and I think that would help so she have some clarity to it.
Right now, um, that property is zone residential, the application will be to have it so commercial. that property is zoned residential, the application will be to have it zoned commercial.
Yes, sir.
Um, what? And you said there was an error in the past on map, you're talking about the tax map.
The
Or the zoning map.
The zoning map. There have also been, maybe maybe you've heard um, problems at the assessor's office, where the tax bill is related to how it's used. So those those issues also occurred in the past. So but I I'm not the assessor. What I looked at is this map, and the property was color coded wrong.
So that's a coloring error.
Yes. It would be it would be an easy fix if this rezoning is denied, to just turn that thing from red to orange. So what I'm asking is, do I turn it from red to orange, or do I leave it red?
Well, there was a map before this one. Can we refer to that and see what it was?
Yeah, it goes all the way back to a handmade map with a sharpie.
Hey, more of what we got?
Yeah.
Um, so what what what's the tax rate on that? There'd be a tax as residential or commercial now?
See, I get getting towards the end of my knowledge, but I'll show you. I'll show you the assessment. Um, and this this is public record. So you've got you've got the assessments there, thirty-one thousand dollars for the vacant lot, and a hundred and twenty-seven for the adjacent uh, lot and house. You the ah, you go across the street of the commercial property. There are differences in assessments, that that this um, this commercial property across the street is worth a lot more. And um, this commercial property across the street is worth a little bit more, but but not much. Sometimes it what we've sometimes seen around town is that commercial properties are worth more. So they'll sometimes be held residential um, in their zoning and their use category for assessment because the tax rate is lower. Um, and then rezone commercial when they're ready to be sold. Or or vice versa, if a property is zoned commercial and held for a long time, you see some grief about the tax rate, especially if there's no tenant.
That sounds like they're doing well now, that it's that it's residential and us zoning it to commercial on a maybe a future sale. So maybe that's what's ZRAT is intending.
Indeed.
I I don't know. I'll just take a guess.
Yeah. Commercial zoning may increase the value.
Okay. Thank you. Well, she ran a business three years ago, and then she changed to residential, I think. Is that how it worked? Now she wants to go back to commercial?
It 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 was it was a live work. And the the Miss Bradley lives in a property that's zoned commercial now. Many of our downtown properties, especially with the upstairs apartments, they are zoned commercial. So it it's okay to live in a commercial zoned property. Um, the assessment issue that she had, the business closed, but the assessor didn't know that. So she is continuing to pay some higher taxes for a while, had to get that fixed. But it's okay to live there now.
No way that, no way this plot could be subdivided like Mr. Goodman was talking about, um, there's a partial of it that's fenced off, seven hundred and fifty-four square feet.
Very small, yeah.
So that means um, with the setbacks and the sewer, et cetera, um, you could put up a boar scout tent.
I I think I think Mr. Goodman makes a good point. There there are some real limitations around slope and utilities about where anything actually could be built here. Um, it it is important that the the downtown residential zoning, um, like the Harrison Street lots, those have a four thousand square foot minimum lot size. Our commercial zoning does not, and we have some, we have some tiny commercial lots like this one five oh one or or this one with the forest, which are quite small. Um, and uh, it can be a good idea to have small commercial lots where a small business can start up, but you have to decide about all of those neighbor impacts like what you've heard in your hearing.
I don't think that the rezoning is called. Um.
Yeah, I sort of agree, but there was a pain that if if somebody approached her and said, I'd sure like to put a little business on your lot, but it's need zoning change, and that's the time to talk about changing the zoning, not now, it's residential. Um, but stay residential until something like that happens in the future. And then we'd have to approve everything. So. I said, I don't think we want to vote on it right anyhow, but let's just uh, uh, feel like it ought to stay residential.
One of the things we could do is, I mean, this actually goes back a couple different town administrators and town clerks, is that they're back and get more information.
Yeah, that's a good idea. She said it was in nineteen ninety-eight or something. She changed the zoning or something. I don't know if we have that information.
It's a long story.
All right, let's put that off now and uh, talk about the VDOT sidewalk project.
We had some, we had some planning commission and um, work session discussion on this one. It relates to the um, sidewalk um, construction grant, which does also involve county infrastructure partnerships, which were very great. Um, the um, application for this um, the sidewalk project goes back to twenty nineteen. It's an old grant application and related to um, sidewalk improvements uh, connecting the end of our good sidewalks here at the corner of Burden Harrison over to the library. Um, years ago, um, planning commission had interest in developing sidewalk construction all throughout the town, eventually connecting downtown to uptown. The strong advice from VDOT was to, you know, find your footing on project management and build a track record of success, deliver some small downtown sidewalks first, and then move on to the bigger ones. So this grant, the four hundred thousand dollar project, um, was the result of that application in twenty nineteen. We put the project on hold during COVID. And in a new world of construction costs now, the strong advice from VDOT is that the project is no longer correctly scoped and budgeted. The uh, the grant agreement that council previously voted on accepts the VDOT grant, but obligates us to any cost overrun. And the right, the advice of the VDOT uh, project managers is that this is not a four hundred thousand dollar sidewalk anymore. It could be redesigned for efficiency, and there's certainly plenty of community interest in um, improved pedestrian features in this area. Um, Boys and Girls Club, Community Center, Neighbors, the Library, um, churches, lots of interest in a well-functioning street there. Um, but the application that we have as scope no longer looks practical. So it was it was the advice of the VDOT team, rather than proceed with it as designed, which might encumber the town in a big way for cost overruns, that we're better off canceling this project, redesigning it, and reapplying. Uh, the project may look a little bit different, but we still have an interest in doing sidewalks at this location. Um, so um, I I carried that forward. The planning commission agreed and voted yes to canceling the project and and redesigning was a good idea. Um, and that's the um, that's the advice of the VDOT team, rather than um, have a cost overrun problem in a year or two.
And so I believe you'd mention that by canceling the project, that frees up sixty thousand dollars for our deficit for the budget, so that cuts the deficit in half.
That's right. Government Services found that same thing, and that was one of their recommendations, that putting this on pause, redesigning it does help with our next year budget shortfall quite a bit.
So should we vote on that now?
The the VDOT team requested your your vote to cancel the project. Yes, sir.
Okay. So everybody's heard all that, you've motioned or hear motion that we cancel the VDOT sidewalk.
As the guy, okay. I'm going to cancel the VDOT.
Nice second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, the only other thing is, I I think before we do any kind of other kind of sidewalk project, what if I I really do think we need to really look at repairing what we have and taking care of that rather than to get new sidewalks, because there's
We're not going to jump right into the sidewalk project. It will come up sometime in the future. Right now, we're going to cancel this one, and then we'll we'll see, it's got to be days ahead, we'll look at uh, maybe maybe try it again. So it's gonna move in second minute, and then no further discussion. I'd like to call for the book.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. What's that?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodsko?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And last, uh, upcoming special meetings, uh, Mr. Walsh, you want to throw some on that?
You uh, you had this discussion at um, work session last week about the heavy workload, both around budget focus and your goals as a council, which we could spoken to a little bit earlier today. So you um, you had tossed out a couple of dates for um, budget focus um, as soon as next week, um, and a strategic planning focus perhaps in March, taking the longer time. Um, you had some discussion as well about the best way to facilitate for the strategic planning focus, whether it could be done on on your own or whether you need some help. Uh, but in in either in either case, I vote to call the public, the special meetings necessary.
So all your pleasure, council. You want to get together next week to start talking about the budget?
On Monday?
Yes, I do.
We're doing all that? Monday to twenty seventh, Tuesday to twenty eighth.
Yes, I got holiday. We can do Monday this time.
We can do Monday this time? Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Fucking you to discuss all the budget, whatever it is. Uh, Monday to this twenty seventh, the seven P M, this is maybe not talking to the public. Your motion.
I motion that we have a budget meeting next Monday.
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
The voice was answered.
Voice noted in all favor.
Right.
Close. Okay, next Monday, seven o'clock. And do we want to talk about this strategic planning uh, focus meeting more now, or you want to work on that way to go?
It's a pleasure.
Let's comment.
Um, if we can.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um. The way I understand it was there was a discussion to involve a a group from UVA. And um, there was also um, discussion that um, uh, one of our town citizens and a member of our governmental services committee, uh, Ms. Morse, um, be a part of this. Uh, first question is, um, have we made a deal with UVA to come over here at the two hundred and four thousand dollars?
I I confirmed their availability and pricing.
Okay, but we have not given them any money.
No, not paid.
Okay, because I really don't think we can afford it, and I think Ms. Morse can do fantastic job. I've I've got no, um, nothing against having this meeting. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think we need anybody from the outside, especially if we have to pay for it.
Yeah, I think what we came to last time was to do some more, and then if that wasn't that attractive, or you want, you know, additional resources, if UVA kind of on the line and prepare, or just, you know, not, I can't blame them, but we want something more of it, we want to do that.
I don't remember talking about it at time. I don't know if that time's the best for me, but um, and for her too, I guess we knew if we're going to do that, but first of all, first of all, I guess, do we want to have the, we want to have a strategic meeting? Um, that we do have a strategic meeting, I think that's first.
Well, on I believe, if it was a two-day meeting, I believe, is what we discussed.
I don't think it's a two-day. I think we were talking about a two-part, like just us at once, and then bringing planning commission into it for the second half.
Can I ask Ms. Morse? Ms. Morse, uh, what what was you on this? Was it two-part, two-day, two weeks?
Well, it was my understanding that town council didn't want to do it on a weekend. So it would probably have to be a two-part in the evening.
Okay.
One, the first part would be town council only. And the second part would be join in the planning commission to that. Uh, I have a proposal, if people are interested, uh, on the council, um, that I can run through with you. There is going to be a little bit of pre-work and some, you know, work during the session. Um, but I can run through that with you. I'm prepared to do that. I have the outline, everything else. Pretty much now down at this point, just in case you wanted to pull the trigger on that.
Oh, it's your pleasure.
Well, I'd like to hear more about it, um, specifically since um, she's made this, you know, offer to to help. Um, we were up here talking about dates and times, and and she's going to be the one to run it. I'd like to get her thoughts on it and see what the first step is, and then we can go from there.
Well, it really is, uh, mostly at your convenience. I I wasn't aware that any time had been settled. So I did check my calendar when I saw the agenda, and the eighteen is open. But that's a Saturday, I think, right? And so it was my understanding that y'all didn't want to, I think Alex, you made a specific comment to go uh, weekend times, and so uh, I'll wait to hear from you on what you want to do. I suspect it'll take at least uh, for the first part, four to five hours, you're looking at going through mission, vision, um, strategic priorities, guiding principles. It's a lot of work. Um, and so we'll have to really stay on task, and it's going to be a brain drain for you all to get into that time slot. And then building on that, uh, with the planning commission, talking about uh, more of a work plan that sets goals and objectives and things that marry onto that strategic priorities.
Now, the audience would be town council, mayor staff. Planning commission?
Um, my suggestion is for the first part to be just the town council.
Is it like a closed session?
Yeah, that's what I I think, because it it's my understanding that there's, you know, there's new people and there's existing people that have been here for a while, and I think it's important for the team to work together on that vision, uh, sort of uninterrupted. I also, uh, Mr. Mayor, as a proposal, uh, would like to potentially work with you. Uh, after that work is done, I'd like to get with you to get a mayor's response to be part of the strategic plan, and also work with you and your staff at town administrator on a broader communication plan, because I think this is something that will affect the community. Um, so it should be communicated broadly, and I know you talked about um, getting inputs. You might want to consider having a meeting to get the community together, to get some of their inputs on vision, whether you're resurrecting small area plan, whether you're, you know, there's some plans in place that could give you a starting point for some of that top work.
So would you want this meeting prior to the council being involved?
Yes, because if you're crafting a vision, you'd want inputs from the community. Now, you do have inputs from the uh, I think it was the small area plan, and some of the marketing work that was done for the proposals before the lots. Um, they had a community charrette, and they got a hundred and thirty-one responses about potential um, visions for the the town and things like that. So you could draw on some of the documentation that exists. But I think at this point, it would be nice to have a community meeting, to have everybody kind of weigh in what they think their vision is, and we would have to work together to sort of come up with a questionnaire for the community to answer.
Okay, so what I'm what I'm seeing is a meeting with you, staff and mayor, and then the initial meeting with council. And then another meeting with all those, plus the planning commission and the public.
Correct. That that would be my recommendation.
I have no idea how to schedule that.
And then to close out, then, Mr. Mayor, you know, we get with you for a statement, and then we look at a broader communication.
Let's see what I can about my mom prep work.
Not really. I mean, on my part it is, but I've been working on it for a while, just in case, you know, you all wanted to do this. There are a number, you know, facilitation isn't just about standing and doing timekeeping. There's exercises that have to go on, and, you know, when you ask people to come up with a vision statement, I mean, that sometimes can be really difficult to do, so you have to walk through steps to kind of get you to to that point and whatnot, and those inputs from the community would be really helpful. You can do it without, or you can do it, you were talking about potentially a mailing and getting a written response, and you could do that as well. But I think it would be better received if you reach out to the community to just at least get their inputs into it.
Okay, let's start working on a plan. So we won't lock in to any dates or times at the moment.
But we we need to, we we have a motion that that we will go ahead and do this, right? Do we need to move uh, move that we'll go ahead with the strategic plan?
You, when you, when you meet, this this event will be a special meeting, and that that needs to be called, so what if you're
Okay, so we don't
You don't want to come into a date like that.
Okay, so so we don't have a motion that we want, we like the idea.
Sure, I'll take that. I'll take that as uh, correct.
Well, and where and where I thought we left it is that you and I, Matt, would get together, put dungeon times together, and then put them in front of the council to see if that would meet with their schedule.
Kind of agenda.
Yeah.
Anything else before we get into their close session?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. I was wondering if I could make a statement. I was going to save it until next month because I'm not make a statement. I was going to save it until next month because I'm not there, but I, I really would like to keep this as close to, um, last month's vote as possible. It's just very brief statement about, um, the vote last month, if we have. Sorry?
The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I'd like to address the public about last month's vote regarding the proposed S U P put forth by Southern Homes in Echelon and my vote in particular. I heard a lot of opinions and concerns from Scottsville residents, both for and against. And I also heard a lot of disturbing comments on both sides and I just wanted to make a few points clear. Number one, I am one hundred percent for sustainable growth in Scottsville. Last year, thirty-six new houses were approved for Bird Street. Twenty-eight to thirty-five houses have been, uh, plotted for Mink Creek development. And there will be roughly fifty houses built by right on Blenheim, which is in the works as we speak. Growth is coming. Ten years ago, the question was how we will get to the population of a thousand. This is no longer an issue. After speaking with police, fire and E M Ts, I felt that an additional two hundred and five apartments on top of that, with the growth of four to six hundred people at once, is not sustainable growth. Number two, just to be clear, my vote in no way was affected by residents whose concern centered around what type of residence would be moving into the apartments. And number three, finally, and most importantly, this was a bad plan. I was very concerned with what Echelon considered affordable housing in Scottsville. I understand that legally they were only obligated to use county data to determine what affordable housing is, but I feel those numbers were skewed. The median family income in Ivy is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. The median family income in Croze is a hundred and two thousand dollars per year. The median family income in Scottsville is forty-four thousand per year. Affordable housing is thirty percent of gross monthly income put towards housing, electric, water and garbage. Twelve sixty-three per month for a two-bedroom apartment is not affordable housing in Scottsville. The average two-bedroom apartment in Charlottesville is twelve sixty-six, just three dollars more, though income is considerably more in Charlottesville. Additionally, it was stated at the November Planning Commission meeting that making twenty percent of the apartments quote unquote affordable would substantially increase the rent of the other eighty percent. I could get into the threat of gentrification, the percentage of people in the Alice threshold, the possibility of pricing out existing downtown residents who work at all of our downtown businesses, et cetera. But I want to keep this shorter than this. The bottom line is, and my computer is frozen. I'm sorry. I'm getting to my bottom line. The bottom line is this was not a good plan for Scottsville. That being said, I fully understand the need for truly affordable downtown rentals in Scottsville and I am committed to working on a way to make them happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Any other comments before we go to the closing session?
Um, I've got just a few comments. Uh, some things I've been thinking about, um, when we do have minutes, I'd like to see the council member's full name instead of just her last name, because it is a legal document, I believe. Is that right? I think a first and a last name would be more appropriate than the last name, um, because Lord helps you. You might have another page sitting up here one day. I don't know what you do with him, but. Yeah, but you know what I mean? No, okay. Um, and I just wondered about this, uh, we were pretty good for a while and then we kind of tapered off of the, the number of speakers we had, but instead of saying my name is Ever Payne, I live at one seventy-six Mountain Vista Road in Scottville. Can, can George Goodwin or, uh, Matthew Holman or Eddie Bryant, you know, can they get up and say, hi, my name is, I am a resident of Scottsville or I am not a resident or non-resident? That way you're not telling them where you live, um, if you don't want to, but it's a whole lot clearer, uh, for me, um. I, I think I know every street in Scottsville, but I don't know how long it'll sometimes. So just say resident or non-resident. It would, it would really, it would, you know, really help me. And I think that's the only couple of things I had to put up there.
I'm going to kind of piggyback off that and maybe Eileen could, or Ms. Morse can, uh, tell us too, but you, you know, if we do some community meetings, you know, in this last, uh, vote last month, there was discussion about who is the community? Is it the five hundred and fifty people who actually live here or is it the fifteen thousand people in the neighborhood? So I think if you do a community, if we do community meetings, we, we should stipulate, you know, who's, who are getting the input from the community or the, uh, larger community? I mean, I think they're both important, but, uh, uh, for the town council, it's a little bit different than planning commission because town council, you know, is voted in by the Scottsville community and not the, uh, other people, you know, and both were welcome to speak at the, uh, hearing, but, uh, I mean, at the public hearing, but the, I think that that's a dilemma for us and, uh, that's something that they can, will we look at a strategic plan, you know, are we looking at, just like last, last month, you know, was, are we helping the, the larger community or the intermediate community? I don't think Scottsville needs two hundred, uh, apartments, but it needs fifty and I, I'm sure Charlottesville needs two thousand. So, you know, I think we have to define that a little bit and, and see who we represent and who we're, we're serving.
Let me, let me jump up again. Thank you. Um, well, agenda for the night to print out, we used to have old business and new business. We didn't have old business and new business here. I got a little confused.
Um, the carryover topic, you mean?
Uh, old business, yeah. As far as I'm observing, item seven, you know, is old business. I think a lot of that was carried over, like you said. But I mean, you all would be in agreement with that. We always have a line, old business, new business. Is that right? And we didn't get it this time. Should we have had it? Matt?
Maybe so, maybe not. I don't know.
We've had it every other meeting. Why not this one?
Oh, no, no special reasons.
I know it, well, it, I don't know if it's required or not, but, you know, I felt like a Baptist looking at a Mrs. Himble when I picked it up. I can read your music, but I don't understand the words. Is, is it?
We can't fix that for the next.
Yeah. Is this a time where I can make a motion on an item?
We're still in session.
Okay, um, but like I said, I got off beat. Um, and to go along with what, uh, Councilman Hines and Hyson were talking about, um, we had proffers attached to this last development proposal, something we never had before, something we obviously didn't know how to handle. Um, and something that brought embarrassment, I think, to town council, myself included, uh, to have, you know, opposite seventy people here and tell them to go home because we're not going to have a meeting. Uh, so to maybe prevent that from happening in the future, because we've got more development areas coming at us. Um, I'd like to make a motion that our town staff be allowed no more than seven days from the date of submission by an applicant to review the proposed proffer and make a recommendation to council. I'm asking four weeks.
Uh, we wrote it to say two weeks, didn't we?
We did.
We voted and passed the, uh, motion to say that any proffer had to be in the office at least two weeks ahead of the, the, the public here.
Yes, sir. I understand. This is different. I'm, I'm saying cut it to seven days. Oh.
Okay, well, I think it's a two-week motion.
Huh?
You made the motion for two weeks.
Yeah, and then I.
It's fine. It's, it's whatever, you know, if that's, if that suits you, if you think it can be done and.
I don't do it, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, it could be done to everybody's satisfaction in seven days.
That's what I want.
I thought there were two things, two, two weeks before they had to put it in and then they had seven days to be decided on. That's what I thought.
Remember the wording of that motion?
Was it the second, the second part of it didn't go. It was, it was two weeks that they'd be in, two, two weeks prior to any meeting. I, I have the obligation to send you an agenda and staff reports three weeks in days prior. So it gets you ten, if, if they submitted at the deadline, I'd have ten days to do the work. And then you, then you get it prior to you.
That's what.
So it is a little different than what you said here just now.
Okay, well, they submitted the unreasonable proffer and we all agreed they were all unreasonable, even their attorney correct.
Yes.
They submitted down on Friday, seven to eight hours prior to the meeting.
Clearly.
And then they, they, they could do that. It was up to us to handle it and we didn't handle it. They, they came back with a second set of proffers that you all jumped on like that. How many days was that? It wasn't two weeks or one week?
No, it was, it was quick.
Like four days.
I think so.
I think he can do it at seven. My motion stands.
Uh, motion is on the floors. Wait a second.
That's it.
Okay, moving to second. Any further discussion?
I think it's a bad idea. One of the things that it's a bad idea because when we had it the first time, she should pay and say, you know, for tonight, Dave, about our town attorney present. It's inconsistent with doing that. Yeah. And I do think when we did have the proper, there was also a meeting that was created that should have never happened in December. That was also something Mr. Payne did. And I think to.
Well, I believe that was a vote on that, Pam.
It was, but it is, that's correct. And I'm simply saying that we should have a reasonable approach so that if we want to do it at the time that you brought it up before the town attorney, it just so happened to not be here and it just so happens to be that same again. So I think it would be wise for us to consult with our town attorney agency. It seems strange that we would introduce something like this at the last moment, that it's not on the agenda that we're introducing at the last second here. Seems like a strange Shakespearean.
Okay, any further discussion? Moving this afternoon and discuss. You have a comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to remember. I feel like and, and I, Dan mentioned a little bit. We had put it off because we wanted to speak to Jim about it, which, which we haven't done. Um, but also I, I just want to put out there that I, I'm uncomfortable with seven days, only because, just because that proffer was able to be done within a few days. We don't know if next time we're going to get some intricate twenty-page proffer that would not get the attention to detail that it might necessarily need if we're saying we have to have a response in a week. I, I, I think forcing a response that quickly, it, we're new to proffers. We have no idea what kind of information might be put through in another proffer that might take longer. I, I think saying that it has to be a week is maybe, you know, biting off our nose to spite our face, uh, on future proffers.
There wouldn't, there wouldn't necessarily be a vote after seven days. It would be so, you know, we'd have more time to review it.
Mr. Mayor, would you consider tailing that until the work session? Maybe you have a town attorney there and maybe you can draft something that's more specific to what you want, so I, uh, on the same page and we all understand.
Yeah.
I'm, I mean, if that's, if that's what the majority would like to do, because we had a problem with, um, the first set of proffers by this last development that they were submitted on Friday. That was a four-hour conversation. Seven to two hours passed, we came in here ready to take action, the gather hit and the public was left dry. Um, in this age of electronics, there's no reason in the world why that attorney could not have had a copy of that proffer on that front and reviewed.
We'll be done about that in the future, but.
So, you know.
About a little bit more in depth.
Maybe, maybe the motion to be, you know, on, on future proffers forward immediately to the town attorney. Maybe.
Okay.
I.
I mean, that's up for discussion.
I think we still.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm fine. Your motion's on the table.
Okay, well, I've got, I'll withdraw my motion of future consideration. Is that allowable? I'll withdraw the motion.
The work session, I hear, I hear the interest in suitable small town proffers policies. We clearly need some drive on.
See if there's other communities, what they have.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anything else?
Meredith, can I just do a real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, starting tomorrow, the twenty-second of February, we're, county's starting our budget process. Between then and the twenty-sixth of April, we have five definite, possible six work sessions. And then on the twenty-sixth of April, the county will adopt its final budget with the tax rate and everything.
All right, we have a close session to deal with here in a little bit, so we thank you for your attendance. If you're involved in the close session with us, uh, stay for a few minutes if you're not. Thank you for your coming to talk.
Thanks for your services, Vice Mayor. It was basically the council, I mean, rightfully, I'm being, um, President of the Council and Vice Mayor, Bill and Meredith, thank you for your comments on the developments. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Don.
Is. We had four people interested on, any of them online or, I know we have one in.
I, uh, there's, there's no one online from the general public and none of our applicants. Uh, Ms. Morse is the only applicant here in person, so we can, we can look to see if anyone else comes, um, Mr.
Do they know about it?
Yes. Um, Mr. Mr. Peck did share prior to this meeting that, um, if others were interested, he would step back. So I sent him the names of everyone else who had expressed interest and he is not here. Okay, so I, I think.
Who else have we gone?
He met.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are we still recording?
We are, we are currently still recording.
Okay.
Would you like to?
Well, it's, yeah, I don't know. Are you supposed to record a word close session?
You can read a motion.
You, I, I beg your pardon. The, the, the legal framework of these close meetings, we have to be very clear about why we're going into close meeting and turning off our recorder.
Okay.
And then we certify after the close meeting that all we did was the same, what we want to do.
Okay.
So a, a motion would be in, a motion would be in order to disaffix specifically subsection one. So move that we on a closing meetings authorized by subsection one, specifically subsection one, is the motion. And then when we come out, we vote to certify that all we did was consistent with the personal matters in section one. We don't talk about anything else. Are you comfortable with that?
Okay, so one of you five people, you're up to read that.
Let me test out my new eyes.
All right.
My name is Ever Payne and I moved that the council enter into a closed meeting as authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code, section two dot two dash three seven, one one comma, specifically the subsection.
Very good, sir.
And does it need a second and a vote?
It, it does need a second.
The times and second in the motion is, uh, discussion. If not, we'll hear a vote. All right, we'll. Now we need to shut the doors to the council chamber. You have to have me down already.